Yeah, and then there's examples like, you know, Lake and Hennepin, which is, it breaks my heart every time I walked on that street.
How do you feel about the Hennepin reconstruction? Do you like that one?
No.
As an example of a bad one that you wouldn't support?
As a, as a, as a horrible one.
I'm originally a Floridian.
Oh, are, are you crazy? Well, I wouldn't want to be in Florida just for the politics alone. So that's, I can completely understand.
People do that to me all the time. They're like, why would you move here? People who live here are down on their winters too much with outsiders, I think.
Yeah.
Because in Florida, we have like eight, nine, 10 months of brutal 100% humidity.
Right.
Can't go outside without soaking your shirt all the way through summer.
Yeah, yeah.
And so it's uncomfortable to do anything outside in Florida.
The other side of the story that doesn't get told by Floridians, right? Or, or outside of Florida, it's painfully humid.
In Minnesota, you just have to dress for it. You just have to have the right shoes, the right number of layers. And you can be outside whenever, almost.
It's invigorating, you know, wakes you up.
This is the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. I'm talking to Ward Eight City Council candidate Josh Basay. Did I get the name right?
Close, Basay.
Basay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna do it over.
Extremely French.
Ward Eight candidate Josh Basay.
Perfect.
Okay, it's another election year here in Minneapolis. Get out to caucus April 8th. Before we get started here, I'm going to remind everyone to caucus and everything. So let's take the temperature of Ward Eight to begin with. Because candidates, if they're doing a good job, should know their wards best. Like, what are the top three issues you're hearing about from people in Ward Eight as you're campaigning?
Yeah, so there's definitely a top three, and it's pretty unanimous in many ways. I would, I would start with, with public safety being kind of the, the, the big one. And, you know, something that folks are certainly concerned about and have been for a bit of time. The other is housing and, you know, to give you a sense of where I live within the ward, I'm very close to the 5th precinct and, and 35W. So, you know, we've kind of been, we bear witness to, to the encampment tragedies that have been happening over the last several years. And, and it's very personal to me as far as the homeless plate goes. So that's another big issue. And then just overall, you know, economic opportunity. And, you know, at some point, the ability to actually work in the city that you live, which I think everybody would want to do in, in theory. And, and having, you know, more opportunities, not just on kind of like, you know, a nine to five job or a basic, you know, minimum wage job, but an actual path to a career and, and something that would sustain, you know, for, for, you know, for, for, for a lifetime and, and have the ability to stay in the city. So that's kind of, in, in addition to property taxes and some things that, you know, kind of affect folks' day-to-day income as well.
We're gonna have a rough time with property taxes.
Yes, I, I agree. And, you know, there, the, you know, there's no simple solution to that. You know, you'll hear, you know, well, just add to the tax base. Well, that's, you know, easier said than done. And, you know, that, that takes time, a lot of time.
Well, Trump, Trump is saying, is not going to give us any money. We're not going to get any federal money. And he's also going to tariff the hell out of everything so that you can't build anything that would add new tax base.
Right, right. In, in addition to the electricity that we're getting from Canada and, and, and natural gas and whatnot will be going up exponentially, I'm sure, so.
So you mentioned the encampment sweeps. I saw on your website, it sounds like you disagree with the approach that the mayor has taken to sweep the encampments. But I'll let you elaborate, like, what do you think is going well or wrong with the approach to encampments? And what, what should we be doing instead?
Yeah, and John, as I mentioned, you know, I mean, this is, this is very close to home for me, if you will. You know, living where I live and having, you know, seen the encampments, you know, in, in place for, well, it feels like, you know, quite some time, at least four years or so. And there, there's two things that really kind of impact, right? There's obviously the folks that are, that are affected by homelessness or homeless neighbors. And then there's the, you know, the people who live near the encampments and are affected by kind of, you know, the, the aftereffect of, of the sweeps themselves. And, and a lot of them is not, you know, it's, it's not a good situation. And so I think it's a, kind of a massive fail on, on both sides. Not to mention the amount of capital that goes into just, you know, doing these sweeps and cleaning up these areas. You know, it's into the hundreds of thousands of dollars per encampment. And I think that those dollars could be much better used in, you know, outreach resources and, and really kind of getting to, to the roots of, or the core roots of, of a lot of the, you know, the homeless crisis itself, whether it be drug addiction, mental health, general trauma by folks who just, you know, have, have experienced some, some really hard times over the last several years. In addition to stable housing, you know, right? I mean, like a bed in a, in a, in a homeless shelter for a few nights may solve an issue for just that, a few nights or a week or so. But by no means is it stable, by no means is it, is it a, is it a place to recoup and recalibrate? And, and I just think that we've just been proverbially kicking the can down the road. And I don't think anybody's happy about it. I also say, you know, I don't, I don't really want to live in a city where having folks live out in the cold and on the streets and under a bridge becomes normal. That, that saddens me, especially the wealth of this country and the wealth of this city. It, it's, it's, you know, it's just ad-horent to me. And, and it saddens me beyond belief. And it frustrates me to no end to see that we just kind of continue this cycle of, of, you know, never-ending kind of, you know, never-ending plight of these folks and, and the city really not stepping up and doing much in the way of solving the issue. And it's, you know, it's a national issue too. It's going on in many other cities as well. And so I think at some point collectively, like, we need to, like, all gather together and figure out some common solutions with other cities as well. I don't think we'll get much help from the feds, considering the, the current, you know, administration. But at a state level, at a county level, you know, it's kind of, should be all hands on deck. I mean, this is, this is a public health emergency and it has been for years. And it needs to be addressed as such.
So I like to think of people in terms of origin stories. I, I've been around local politics for a decade. I mean, have a lot of friends, meet a lot of people. And everybody's got an origin story, like the reason they got involved, the issue that really moves them, the reason they show up at city hall or email their council member. So I'm just like wondering, what's the problem you're running to solve? What's your origin story? Not, not like a laundry list of this is my platform, but like, what got you into it and motivated you? Maybe I'm gonna run for city council.
Yeah. Well, I mean, first of all, just take a step back. You know, I'm a, I'm a lifer. I've lived here my whole life. And, you know, this, this city, to say the least, means a lot to me. I also, my wife and I are raising children in the city, you know? And, and, you know, I kind of want them to live in, in, in the best, best home possible. And, you know, I will say that over the last couple of years, I've never been more concerned about my home, my city, and directionally kind of where we're going and, you know, how, how we're solving problems or not solving problems. And so I, I, in many ways, just felt like, you know, I'm complicit if I don't try and do something. Whether it's support another candidate or whether, you know, get more involved in my neighborhood or what have you. And, and I chose to, you know, to, to, to look at city council where I could affect change the most, at least right here in, in Ward Eight, which, you know, in many respects, you know, has been ignored for quite some time and, and really needs a much louder voice and, and really beyond just the vote, someone who's going to advocate for the folks here.
So what kind of job do you think Andrea Jenkins did? I know your opponent, Soren Stevenson, has been critical, said she's not, she's not showing up when she needs to. I hear you saying you feel like Ward Eight needs a louder voice.
Yeah.
Do you feel like we need, Ward Eight needs something different than Andrea Jenkins? Has she done a good job? How are you gonna be different?
Yeah, so, I mean, in, in, in all fairness, you know, Andrea is, has been experiencing some, some pretty serious health issues. And, and I know she's, you know, got some pretty progressive issues that have kind of affected her mobility and whatnot. And that, that takes, you know, takes energy from, from a person. So I, I will kind of, you know, give her, give her, you know, her, her due respect for kind of powering through that. Having said that, I think, you know, just having a greater presence within the community and, and, and showing up and returning calls and returning emails and, and that base constituent service component, you know, is really instrumental. And first of all, building trust and secondarily, just getting the job done and answering, you know, answering the, you know, the, the concerns of, of the community. I've known Andrea personally for quite some time. We've been involved with DFL politics for, you know, the past 20 years. And, you know, I consider her a friend and obviously very much a trailblazer in, in her own right. And, and, and a pretty, pretty impressive person. And, you know, has, has served, have served this ward well. And, and, you know, had some circumstances that may have affected, you know, some of, some of her day-to-day, her day-to-day performance or her day-to-day job. But at the same time, it's, it's, it's commendable to kind of hang in there when you're battling, you know, kind of some, some pretty major health issues.
Can you think of anything, like, issue-wise that you disagree with her, you would have gone a different way?
Yeah, you know, I, 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 in many respects, we, we, you know, we, we align on a lot of the major issues as far as, you know, especially for George Floyd Square. I think she's been really an advocate for, you know, the folks who live there and the business owners and really trying to look to kind of progress into, into a different direction. But, you know, I think the encampment issue probably could have been addressed a bit sooner and a bit more, you know, expediently. You know, there's parts of the city, you know, in particular, you know, the north side of Minneapolis that we, they don't have homeless, they don't have encampment issues. And I, and I think they, they address those folks in the street much better or have more resources or, you know, just kind of are, are a bit more aggressive and, and kind of meeting the challenge head-on. And, and to have this encampment issue go on for so long, I think is a failure on many different levels with many, many different agencies. And it's just not acceptable. And I think a lot of people feel that frustration.
Did you pay attention to the Labor Standards Board issue? Because that, that one was a head-scratcher for me because Jenkins voted for it, but then sustained, she changed, she did that on a lot of things, like would vote for something and then sustain the mayor's veto afterwards.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering if you have a position on the Labor Standards Board?
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, for me and a bit of my background, you know, I, I come from labor. You know, my mom was a, a union member for 40-plus years and I worked for unions for over a decade. So that's very much a, a core issue for me and a, and something that I'm really passionate about. And to me, you know, I guess I, I didn't completely, I guess I get, didn't directionally kind of get where that was going as far as kind of, you know, the, i- i- if it was in support of unions or if it was in support of general labor and how the unions played into that. And, and frankly, you know, I wasn't that close to that particular, particular policy, just anecdotally. But I will say, you know, I have always been on the side of, of working people and, and have always been an advocate for workers' rights. And, you know, I would support that in any way, shape or form. But I also would say too, that, you know, in, in my time in labor, business was always a partner in what we did, you know? I negotiate on behalf of my members and, and the business would reciprocate. That's why you call it collective bargaining, you know, you, you work together. And it was never a situation where, you know, you know, we were trying to put a, a business, you know, put a business out of, out of, out of, out of, out of business. And, and really because that wouldn't serve our members very well.
Yeah, it felt to me, because it's basically an advisory board, that it would be made up of some, some labor reps and some community reps and also business. And so it was in thirds, like community orgs, labor.
Weird, here we go.
We've got some lighting issues.
Yeah, that's better. No, yeah, I mean.
So, so the mayor, the reason the mayor vetoed it, let me see if I can recall this, was he wanted to make half the appointments. And that is just not how our advisory boards work. The mayor does not get half the appointments ever.
Right.
So that felt like a, a, a fake objection from him. He wanted to veto something and he vetoed it because advisory boards, he doesn't get half the appointments, never does. That's not the only thing that's done. He also wanted half to be made up of, of businesses. The reason I think it was not such a big deal and it didn't have to be a big fight is because it was, would just suggest policy to the council. So the mayor would still have a veto at the end of the process if he thought it was bad. The council would still have their input. So it felt to me like, if they're gonna send us ideas, that's fine. We'll look at them. We will take input from constituents and businesses. And just felt like it didn't need to be the big fight it turned, turned into.
Yeah, no, and I, I, I agree with that, that point of view. And, and, you know, a lot of things get misconstrued as well and, and, and probably built up to be more than what they are. You know, I've organized lots, lots of, you know, committees to, to, to negotiate on their behalf. And, and, you know, always the main objective is have, you know, the voice of, of, of the worker in the room. And, and if that was the intent, then, you know, that, I'm in, I'm in full support of that. And, you know, to, to, to build on that relationship, you know, employee and employer is always a benefit.
So on your website, you, there's a section that's headlined like, "Ideas Over Ideology", I think is the way you put it. And I'm thinking, well, everybody's got an ideology.
Sure, sure, sure.
Like, I have, I have things that motivate me. Doesn't mean, you know, you don't also think about things, but I think people are gonna see that as a red flag. The candidate, the candidate who's railing against ideology.
Yeah.
So how do you, how would you tell people you're gonna put ideas over ideology? Like, what does that mean to you? How would you explain that?
Yeah, I think more specifically, it's, it's, you know, about having conversations and about, you know, really kind of collectively coming to conclusions and making decisions amongst the folks who I represent. And it's not about, it's not about what I personally believe and that's kind of, you know, the, the way, the direction that we're all gonna go. It's, it's, you know, this is, this is a collective. And, and, and I'm a big fan of building consensus and, and working on, on, on behalf of, of many people. And that's how I worked as a union organizer. I may have my own personal opinion on that particular employer or, or, or business owner. But I'm also gonna consult my, my members and, and, and we're gonna work on that together. And, and we're gonna collectively, you know, kind of form, form our own, own opinions and, and path forward. So I think, I think, you know, you know, just the proverbial, I don't need to be the smartest person in the room. And, and it's not my way or the highway. And, and, you know, I intend on truly working, you know, collectively and, and building that consensus. And I think that's kind of what I was driving at is that, you know, as we all have passion and all, as we all have, you know, ideals and things that, you know, are, are core values, as, as representatives, as, as public servants, we've also got to take, take into consideration the folks who, who we represent as well. And, and we may differ and we may disagree. But it's definitely not, this is, you know, again, this is kind of what we're doing and because I say, or I think it's the best direction to go, me individually.
What do you make of the dynamic city hall right now? The council member perspective, like a majority of the council members would say, the mayor is not including us in the process on these big decisions. Because we have a lot of showdowns where there's a process, thing is developed in the mayor's administration. And then it comes up for a vote where the council has to approve it and they vote against it. And you could say, well, look at, look at that city council blowing up the process one more time.
Yeah.
Or the council perspective is, the mayor has not included us. We haven't had an input in this. We haven't been part of the conversations. He didn't try to get us to buy into this.
Yeah.
He just laid it on us and said, my way or the highway. And that's not really conducive to working well together, I think. And it was like that with the previous council too, I would say. The mayor is not working well with council members, this council, the previous council. And so I'm wondering how you interpret what you're seeing?
I interpret it as a lack of, you know, process, right? And, and things that are, are, you know, built into initiatives. And, and, you know, a collective vision and things that we're working on together. It seems like there's a lot of one-offs and things that come up. And, and, and I don't see that as, you know, a very fluid process. And I've talked to a lot of council members who say the process is broken. There is no process. And, and so, you know, if, if we don't understand fully what that executive does or branch is, is responsible for and what we're responsible for, then it is a lot of this in, in back and forth. And, you know, a complete stalemate and we just, you know, we stand still and ultimately the people of the city suffer for it, you know? So, and I, I think, you know, in, in other words, you know, you gotta get beyond your personalities. You gotta get beyond your own personal grudges if you have those. And you have to get back to process and kind of, you know, what, what moves the ball forward. And, you know, in any negotiation, it's always about finding middle ground. And if folks don't want to do that and they refuse to do that, then that's, that's gonna be a challenge. And, and I hope to bring a little bit of that kind of stability to the council itself and, and kind of the proverbial level set and, and get, you know, get down to kind of, you know, what our, our primary goals are. And, and at the end of the day, things have to, have to move forward.
So if you're elected, are you prepared to like push on the mayor and his administration to open up that process and get the council involved earlier and more thoroughly? No?
Absol- absolutely. No, absolutely. Earlier, earlier the better. And, and so we're not, you know, going back and forth and running through vetoes and, and veto overrides and all of these things that, that ultimately, you know, take time and, and waste time and being just much more planful and mindful. And, and, and goes with not just the mayor, his staff and, and the folks who, who work for him. You know, there's various components to that as well. And, and, you know, everyone has to work together. You know, I've kind of, I've been in the business world for a while and like, collaboration is everything. You can't do, you know, big, big projects all by yourself. And you in fact need other folks to, to help you along the way. And, you know, you, you need their buy-in. And so that, that takes a bit of trust. It also takes, it takes process. I will just say that again. It takes process and, and, and laying out expectations. And so I have no issue voicing, you know, my concerns and how I, how I would prefer to work as a council member.
Let's talk about George Floyd Square. So the council wants to pedestrianize the George Floyd Square. The mayor had a plan to reopen it, reopen it to cars, reopen it to transit. Council rejected it and was like, no, we're moving forward with pedestrianization. Where, where do you stand on that?
Well, I, I mean, I, I stand with, with the people in Ward Eight. And, and, and so the people in Ward Eight said, you know, that we, we want, you know, a flex plan. We want a flexible, a street plan. And, you know, and, and there was $2 million invested in, you know, researching the possibilities for George Floyd Square. And the residents and the business owners, you know, made their decision. And so I don't know, you know, where the confusion lies. And, and especially, you know, nine council members who don't even represent the ward. I, I think that's interesting to me that they know better than either council member Jenkins or the folks who live there. That's, that's interesting to me. So, and I disagree with that.
I think council member Chavez would say, I also represent the intersection. That's what he, how he would respond. So I thought I'd throw that in there.
Okay. Well, he's not the, I mean, he's not, it's not in his ward, the, the actual intersection itself. So I would disagree with that as well. But either way, there, there's, there's many components to that. And one being, you know, in, in my personal opinion, let's honor the man properly with a permanent memorial that'll be there for decades and decades and decades and that warrants the gravity of what happened on that corner. Let's have the people show a bit of, of resilience and, and, and positivity to the ability to move forward, the people who live there. And, and, you know, let's shine some light on, on an area that needs the light. And, and so, and I talk to residents there continually. And they are beyond frustrated and, and miffed and, and really, you know, disheartened. And so, so that, that was, that veto override was a blow to all of them. And, and I, and I stand along with them.
Let's talk about housing. So real basic question. Do you think the 2040 plan was a good thing? The comprehensive plan adopted like six or seven years ago?
I mean, in the spirit of, of density, yes. And, you know, I think in many ways, it was poorly communicated to the residents. You know, there's, there's kind of, myself included this idea that, well, we're just gonna, you know, tear down single-family homes and build triplexes everywhere. And, you know, and that was kind of the, the initial knee-jerk reaction to, to folks who live in the city. But absolutely, there's a need in, in, you know, changing our zoning and, and being a bit more open with, with building density in the city. And it's needed. And it's needed to meet the homeless crisis. It's needed to meet, you know, environmental concerns. And it's needed to, to, to build our, to build our tax base as well and to get more folks living in the city. So, and I, and I actually don't, I mean, I think that, that 2040 plan is, is caught up in other legislation currently, you know, and kind of is, is at a standstill right now. I'd be curious to kind of see where that goes.
What, what do you mean by that, other legislation? Like?
I know it's been hung up in the courts and such.
That was settled, yeah.
Okay, okay.
We won 2040 plan. It's here to stay.
That's news, the news to me, okay. But no, I mean, you know, in, in the spirit of, of development, I'm all for. And, you know, I, we have far too many empty lots in this city and in this ward that we could be, you know, building good housing for folks who need it.
Do you think we should make it easier? Because one of the criticisms of the 2040 plan from the, we should have gone farther side is, there was all this, you know, people celebrated the idea that we're, we're gonna legalize triplexes. But the outcome hasn't been that we've built a lot of triplexes. Because it turns out on a, a standard-sized Minneapolis lot, the zoning is too still restrictive to allow those to be built. So do you think like easing things like floor area ratio and like setbacks to make sure that it's actually possible to build a triplex in, in some of these neighborhoods?
Yeah, I, you know, and, and I, I think, you know, within reason, right? And, and so if you're in a residential area that has single-family homes up and down the block, sometimes, you know, that, that's just not a fit. And, and, but, you know, in Ward Eight, along Nicklet, along Lake Street, along Chicago, I think that's absolutely a fit for larger, larger homes and they have the capacity for parking and, and whatnot. Because ultimately, you know, it's, it's got to, it's got to, we have to have the capacity on a residential street to have many, many more residents living on that, on that block.
Let's talk about parking.
Okay.
So sometimes, so we've, we give over, we have given over a whole lot of space to cars, even in our urban areas, not just suburban areas. And so these conflicts come up where the city builds a bike lane, a bus lane, they widen a sidewalk, or we do traffic calming that, you know, necessitates, we take some space away from cars, do a four-to-three lane conversion, so traffic is slower, fewer people get hurt. Because the faster you drive and the more speeding there is, just the more severe and deadly these crashes are. So like, I wonder if you agree that we are on the correct path transportation-wise, where the city is building more bike lanes and bus lanes, making the, our neighborhoods more pedestrian-friendly? Do you agree with the direction we have been on?
Yes and no. I, I, I mean, I think, you know, a good example of, of something that I think has been successful is Lindale and kind of the two-to-one or the one-to-two split and kind of how they, how they, how they built that. But, but maintaining the parking on a commercial corridor. Because people want to go to businesses and the businesses, businesses want them to go to their establishments. And there's also residual effects to that, you know? The residential streets become more bogged down with traffic because people get off of the streets that used to kind of be a little bit more easy flowing. Um, and so, so that's something that needs to be taken into consideration as well. Now, as far as bike lanes go, I've been riding on bikes since, you know, I was a BMX kid. So I'm, I'm all about, uh, biking around the city. Um, and, um, as long as it's safe and, and everyone's safe, um, you know, with, with proper burials, curb, 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 curb height barriers and, and things to kind of keep bikers safe. But there again, you know, it's gotta be, it's, it's gotta be something that, you know, the community wants and desires. And, um, and a lot of folks love it. So, um, from that perspective, you know, from a Ward Eight perspective, you know, I would take, take the lead of what folks, want to see in their, in their neighborhood.
So with an answer like that, it comes down to like, who are you listening to? Because a whole lot of decisions, you're going to hear from both sides. I like it, I like it, I hate it. And there's a whole lot of passion on the I hate it side. People are scared of change and a lot of times, once it is built, it is not so scary. So if you would listen, if you would listen to the side that was like, no, never change. It's too scary, then you never take the opportunity to, to build some really nice projects.
Yeah. Yeah. And then there's examples like, you know, Lake and Hennepin, which is, it breaks my heart every time I walk down that street.
How do you feel about the Hennepin reconstruction? Do you like that one?
No.
As an example of a bad one that you wouldn't?
As a, as a, as a horrible one. And, um, and it was not just the reconstruction. It was, you know, the city's decision to have, you know, big corporate stores there. And, and, and again, they kind of bet wrong on that horse that, you know, once, you know, Apple and Columbia, they just bailed and, and just left vacant holes there. And, um, you know, I didn't agree with, with the direction of, of the businesses there. But, um, that, that has always been a thriving street, a thriving area culturally, full of energy. And if you, you can go there on a Saturday night and not see two people walking down the street on Lake and Hennepin. And that's sad. No, it's just a different Lake and Hennepin. And, you know, it may never come back to what it was. Again, I've been here my whole life, so I remember what it was and it was a cool area, you know? I was a punk rock skate kid. I used to hang out there every day in the eighties. And, um, it's just not that anymore. So, and that's unfortunate. So, so those are the examples that the, the hate it crowd can, you know, that they, that, that they look to and say, yeah, that probably wasn't the best decision. Um, now, you know, I don't know how you, how you go back from that. You know, from, from Lagoon to 31st Street on Hennepin, again, it's outside of my ward, but again, I love the area. There's two parking spots for, for two blocks. So obviously the businesses are too, too encouraged by that. And, uh, and I think there's like two or three businesses that are actually still open on, on Lake Hennepin currently.
So is there a council member where you think, wow, I really like how they do things? Uh, I just admire them. Like, who do you like?
Um, you know, I mean, uh, council member Jenkins has been a friend of mine. And I think she's always been pretty straightforward and, and has been, you know, close, close with her constituents. You know, up until last few years where she, um, you know, wasn't feeling so well. I think Elliot Payne's very sincere and very, you know, kind of in, in tuned with, with his community. And obviously he's very passionate and that's something I totally respect. Because I think you, the, the more amount of empathy you bring to this, to this job, the better. And you don't lose sight of that. And, and I think, you know, Elliot really shows that. So, um, he's, he's an individual that I have some respect for.
I really like Elliot Payne too. He's the nicest, most gentle and thoughtful and, uh, smart guy. Totally. And I'm thinking if I was mayor, I would make him my best friend. Maybe I, maybe we don't agree on everything. I would make Elliot Payne my best friend.
He could, he can at least, you know, bring up the mood, right? And he's just a, he's a pleasant individual.
Things would work better, right? If, if the mayor and Elliot Payne were best friends, uh, things would work better. And I, I, I'm come down on the side is I don't think Elliot Payne is the, the problem in that dynamic.
Yeah. Yeah. And, you know, that could, but that kind of brings up a good point. I mean, I, I think ultimately we have to find a sense of solidarity, starting with, with City Hall. Like we, we don't have the time to quibble with each other anymore. And, and especially what's happening nationally. And so Elliot Payne and whomever's going to be the next mayor and all of us, we have to find a way. We have to find a way, uh, to, 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 to work together and to form solidarity. It doesn't mean we're going to agree on everything, but we can set the example for the rest of the city. And that's what the city expects us to do. Um, and, and, and it starts with the person, right? Elliot Payne's a lovely person. Let's, let's get to the personal level and, and, you know, and business of politics is business of politics and, and, and we can, you know, go from there. But, um, I think there's just a, there's a absolute need for folks to, to, to come together. And, and what better place than at City Hall, uh, starting in 26 ultimately.
One of the things I get frustrated by, like as a close watcher of city, city issues. Uh, and like what, the kind of information that I see going out about crime and policing in the city and the idea that like, well, it's just a knee jerk reaction. This is the city council's fault. And then I look at the police budget, people are stuck on talking about defund the police. We've got a police budget that's 50 million above what it was in 2022. In 2024, the council approved, uh, record police raises. And, uh, hiring is up. And I think people don't understand the mayor is in charge of the police. Like people just do not understand that, a lot of people, even after the strong mayor thing. So I wonder if you, how do you explain to people what your role is with the police? How much can they expect you to, to help them with those kinds of things? Even though the mayor is in charge of the police? Delineate those roles for me.
Well, I mean, I mean, if, if there are gaps and from a resident, it seems like there are as far as, you know, staffing goes. And, and wherever that, you know, wherever that truth lies, whether it's with the, with the council or the mayor and the budget. But the fact is, you know, the, the community, they're not being serviced the way they should. Um, and I know that from personal experience, um, and, and, you know, living where I live. Um, and, and that's not acceptable. So however we get there, we have to get there. Um, and if the police are in fact understaffed, then we have to improve upon that. I like the trajectory. I like the fact that, you know, we're hi- hiring very diverse, um, folks into, into the department itself. Diverse enough, you know, diverse to where they, you know, um, represent their community. I like the fact that, you know, the two consent decrees are already kind of in play. And I don't think, I don't think that's talked about enough. And maybe there should be more transparency in exactly what's happening with that and what's been enacted, um, with, with those two consent decrees. And then, you know, to your point, it, you know, bad cops should be dealt with from administrative level, from the mayor to the chief. Again, I'm a union guy. Those are union folks. They have a union contract. There's progressive discipline built into every single collective bargaining agreement. So if you have bad cops, you get rid of them. That's it. And if that's not happening, then yes, uh, the, the, the executive branch or the administrative branch needs to be held responsible for that. Absolutely.
Let's talk about the Davis Moturi shooting. Andrea Jenkins, uh, in the aftermath of that shooting and the, the police just not arresting the neighbor who shot him, uh, went to, I believe it was, uh, was it the fifth precinct she went to? And, uh, basically challenged, uh, the, the chief over it. They got into a spat. Like, how do you think that was handled? I think a lot of people were disappointed in Chief O'Hara blaming Davis Moturi for getting shot. In addition to the not arresting him. Just like a lot of excuses instead of saying, wow, we messed up. That should have happened differently. The chief was like, well, you're not hearing the side of the story where Davis Moturi is actually, you know, encouraging the guy to shoot him through his behavior.
Yeah. Well, considering that, that home is a few blocks from my house, uh, it was very serious. You know, they had the street blocked off and, and kids, there's a, there's an elementary school a few blocks from there as well. So it was a very dangerous situation. I don't blame Davis. Um, I think that individual was out of his mind and definitely, you know, very mentally ill. Um, and should have been dealt with far earlier, uh, uh, in, in the initial complaint. Um, so that was poorly handled across the board. And to point the finger at the victim, um, that's, that's completely irresponsible. Um, so, um, uh, that was just a, a, a boondoggled situation from, from jump. Not to mention, you know, they completely destroyed an entire home just to go after this guy. And I, I would think there's a, there's probably a better way to extract him. Um, cause I drive by that home all the time. It's boarded up. It's probably going to be demolished and, you know, someone could be living there. So I don't, it was just a, a really, you know, flawed situation to say the least.
Sometimes I wonder if they had to like make a big production out of it to say, see, we couldn't have just come in and handled this. It's a whole thing where we need to dismantle an entire house.
We can hear the, the, the negotiator loudspeaker from here and we live, you know, three, four blocks away. It was, it was quite the production. And, uh, I, you know, I, I think they, you know, could have went in and just taken care of it. But quite theatrical for sure.
Do you think Mayor Frye has been a successful mayor? He's two terms in and I wonder if you think he should be reelected?
Uh, you know, I, I think, um, he's had some pretty tough circumstances, uh, uh, to give him, you know, all due respect as far as COVID and, um, you know, George Floyd being murdered. I do think that, you know, he's got, you know, he's, he could probably learn to, um, uh, work across the, across the aisle or across the room a li- a little bit better. And I don't know, you know, if that, if that's improved. But from a resident standpoint, you know, we'd still feel like we're just stuck. And, and whether it be the mayor, whether it be the city council, there has to be some type of movement, um, one way or the other. And, and that's from everybody that I talk to and, you know, my neighbors. So, um, you know, however we get there, and I've met with the other mayoral candidates too. And, and they're all, you know, they're all great, you know?
Would you like to announce your endorsement of a mayoral candidate right now?
No. No, no, but they're all, they're all.
You could upset a lot of people. You could upset a lot of voters if you did.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Headline news on a Friday. Um, no, but yeah, they're, they're, they're all great and great people and well attended. And, um, look, all of us just want to, just want to progress and move forward and, and get out of this kind of, this, this stalemate. And, uh, and again, the, the time is, we, we don't have time. We have to do it now. And, and we've got to, we've got to come together either way. And, uh, and, and, you know, city leadership is gonna, is gonna, you know, kind of lead the charge hopefully in, in 26.
So I see a lot of charts going around trying to categorize candidates with certain labels. So there's a new PAC that is categorizing like pragmatic moderates, I think was their label. And then DSA aligned. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna force you to choose. Are you a pragmatic moderate or are you DSA aligned?
Yeah. Yeah.
Just a disclaimer for listeners, Emily Kosky is in the DSA aligned, uh, category.
Okay. Yeah. Well, so, so, you know, in, in a lot of ways I'll show my age. But like when I, when I first got into the race, I had to, I had to, uh, inform myself on what DSA was, you know? And so, you know, obviously I'm not aligned with, with DSA. Having said that, I, you know, I, um, I appreciate the passion and I appreciate the, um, the fight. You know, I'm a, you know, I'm an old punk rock soul and, and I, and I love the fact that, you know, people are shaking it up. And, and I, and I, and I appreciate that. But I'm a DFLer. I've been a DFLer my whole life. I, I'm old school in that way. I'm a, I'm a labor guy. I'm a working class guy. 10 years ago, I was probably the most progressive person on the block. I don't know if I am anymore, but you know, um, uh, you know, coming, coming from my background, uh, I'd, I, you know, pragmatic, the pragmatic term's new to me too. I had to ask people about what, exactly what that meant too.
That's a huge red flag when somebody, when you use the word pragmatic to describe yourself or the people you like, like.
Yeah. Yeah. I, so I, I, I wouldn't use that one either. I mean, if pragmatic is like, you know, your intent is to get things done and on behalf of the folks who you represent. Well, okay, but I mean, I don't, I don't need to say that in, in that word, you know? It's just like, uh, that's, it's your job.
Another term that listeners should be on the lookout for is neo socialist. I saw that one used and I have no, I have no idea what that means.
Interesting, neo socialist.
It just makes it sound scarier, like.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, back in, back in my Upton days, I used to hang out with, uh, with anti racist skinheads. And, uh, and, and we'd fight the neo Nazi skinheads. We'd do the whole thing and that, and that was in the eighties. So maybe that, you know, that, that, that term's coming back. I don't know.
So last question, we're almost done. I ask people to make recommendations and it can be a recommendation for anything that you enjoy. What do you like doing? What's fun? What do you do to relax? What, what do you want other people to try?
Oh, man. Um, you know, I, so I've, you know, grew up, uh, here on the south side. And I always enjoy, and a lot of people don't even know it exists, the bird sanctuary next to Lake Harriet. It's like, yeah, it's like the coolest like ecosystem and you, and it's, and it's super quiet. Um, and if like, you want to like, you know, kind of get some, some forestry cleansing, that's an awesome place to go. Um, as a kid, like we'd, we'd go there and then we'd go fishing at Lake Harriet. And, um, I, I highly recommend that if you just need to decompress, which, you know, a lot of us do. And also in the wintertime, there's a great sledding hill at, um, at London, at, at King's, King's Hill, um, on, uh, on 40th and, and Bryant too, that's up the street. So if you're into doing that kind of stuff, that's a cool place to go as well.
I don't usually offer my own recommendation, but as long as we're talking about forests, urban forests. Uh, Cedar Lake, just walk around Cedar Lake, the north side of Cedar Lake is a great, a great secluded forest type environment to enjoy.
It's a lovely beach in the summer too. I, I did, I dig Cedar Lake.
Okay. Josh Basay, did I get that right?
Yes, perfect.
Josh Basay is running for city council in Ward Eight. Again, caucusing has happening in the city on April 8th. Everyone should go try to become a delegate. And, uh, this is the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. Thank you for listening.